No order, please stand for the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thanks for coming, everybody. Sorry, it's warm in here. I guess we gotta get our air conditioning fixed. So, um, by not complaining about the weather. Let that be known. Uh, roll call, please.
Maureen Bory.
Present.
Mark Burchard.
Absent excuse.
Joanne Shirkey.
Here.
Artie Bryson.
I'm here.
Kristi Hilton.
Here.
Chris Oregan.
Here.
Cindy Valentine, here.
Okay. First thing we have is a public hearing for our budgets. I'll entertain a motion that we open up a public hearing.
I'll make a motion to support the opening of the public hearing at 7:02 PM.
I'll support that.
Yeah, a motion to support, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed, motion carries. Right now, I'll open up the public hearing. For any of our budgets that we have, uh, for fiscal year 2021, '22. We have our general budgets, our parks and recs, music in the park, cemetery, fire, police, garbage, DDA, frag, mighty sewer, and water. Any public comments? Wish I could play that Jeopardy music. Any public comments on our budgets? Hearing none, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion that we close our public hearing.
I'll make a motion. Board, I'd like to close the public hearing for the township budget 2021, 2022 at 7:04 PM.
Support.
Okay, a motion of support, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, the public hearing for our budgets is now closed. Uh, next we have bills payable. I will entertain a motion for bills payable.
Board, I'll make a motion that we support bills payable in the amount of $129,768.96.
We have motion of support, any discussions? You okay there, Steve?
I can.
Okay. Hearing none, other than Steve. Roll call vote, please.
Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristi Hilton.
Yes.
Chris Oregan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next is our supervisor's report. You know what I'm gonna stop doing? Is high water and COVID reports. Because I don't have to anymore for the first time in two years.
Good on you, good on you.
Good on you.
Fantastic.
That's right.
Great news.
That's right, yeah, actually, the water level's staying flat and this time of year it's usually going up. I think it might have snuck up about an inch in the past two weeks, but...
It hasn't.
But, uh...
Southwest wind, yeah.
Yeah, so anyhow, uh, still been dealing with a lot of building and light issues. Had a lot of talks and met with our building official and our new attorney and, um, people in the building department to smooth out the whole process for dangerous buildings going forward. So, uh, we'll hear some more on that, we're gonna expedite that whole process. And, uh, so I'm excited about that. If you haven't noticed, our new, two new fire trucks are here in town. We got one parked out in front. Um, and, uh, chief said this next week, we should maybe having a new airboat show up. I think they're leaving Sunday from Florida to bring it up here. So that's exciting, too. Uh, oh, and a side note, too, our tanker that we approved them to sell, and we did have an offer around $5,000. Chief did a little bargaining, you know how tough he is, and he got another $1,000 for it. So we got $6,000 for the tanker. So, good on chief, right?
Yep.
Um, still in the middle of a, of a negotiating new collective bargaining agreement with, uh, Michigan Association of Firefighters. And been working on our sewer interceptor project, our wastewater treatment plant capacity issues. Our bike path, actually, the seal coating's all done on the bike path. And, uh, the only thing left is the actual asphalt on the one section that we built up. And that should start this week. It's been a real challenge getting materials for the seal coat guy and the asphalt guy, so, um... But that's in the, in the process. And, uh, you know, we're working on engineering still on the Harson's Isle Nature Park. And, uh, let's see. Working on general liability, insurance renewal. Uh, and, you know, I've been having conversations with No Limits Fishing about the handicap fishing pontoon boat. That's gonna go out of the Pearl Beach Fishing Pier. Uh, all the electrics in, we're waiting for the hoist to show up. They got the boat. It's name, it's cool name, Barrier Breaker is the name of the boat. And actually, where did I write it down? Their website went live today, is nolimitsfishing.org. They got a great website. So that's good. And started, uh, again, doing a lot of work and doing the study on if it makes sense for us to bond out our MERS liability. And actually, given the li, the interest rates that we've received for our own fire trucks, it does look very good for us for that going forward. Actually, had conversations in the past two weeks with Gary Peters' office and Debbie Stavina's house, office. They're supporting the federal funding on our sewer infrastructure, uh, project going forward, so that looks really good. We have, uh, people on both sides of the aisle, uh, supporting it. The Flamingo Bridge project is being delayed. I know we had a, uh, end date. The bridge was supposed to be done July 1st, and the whole project was supposed to be done the end of July. Uh, the, um, part of the, or major part, the decking is a special wood that they have to get, wood, wood timbers. And, uh, I can't get them right now, they're waiting. I heard, oh, and it's very non-committal, this company. The only place that they can get this, this, uh, wood, or this big pine timbers is in the northeast section of the US. They make bridge decks and sailboat masts out of this, these trees. And, um, they, uh, they're hoping July, but they're in a very non-committal way things are going. It might be August and, and I asked the guy, the, the company, uh, Cornerful, they've been, they're, they're actually ahead of schedule. So they may, actually may have to shut down work there for a couple of weeks until they, we get this material. No warning from the supplier whatsoever. When they, the day they ordered, they said, oh, sorry, we don't have it. And, uh, so that, that's troublesome for that project. Met with Lisa McLean's, our Congresswoman's office. There's actually possible funding. We were talking about getting some more emergency sirens, four actually, in the township. And there may be some possible federal funding for that. Uh, they're checking into that. And, uh, also, uh, uh, I've been working with the Gray Fox and Denise in Elginak about allowing, um, the cadet boat to dock in, Coast Guard dock in Elginak. And, um, the Coast Guard, but first they said yes, then Cleveland called and they said no. And we're trying to get that sorted out so we could have the Gray Fox docked in Elginak, which I think would be way cool. It's a cadet training, uh, vessel, retired Navy boat, about 120-foot long boat. Okay, DDA approved the quote, engineering quote, to do the bathrooms. Other approval at the Pearl Beach Fishing Pier. And, um, uh, the estimated cost of that is $94,000. The Pearl Beach Fishing Pier signed, which I'm really anticipating for. I thought it'd been installed now, but it's gonna be installed pretty soon. And, uh, we talked about, um, sections in the clay that they don't have broadband right now. And we, I got a quote today, actually, and it's not a quote, it's an estimate, from Comcast to do these, I don't know, three-plus miles. And it came out to $114,000. I don't know, I was thinking around 80, but it doesn't surprise, you know, the cost. But that's just a estimate based from, uh, probably Google Earth. They asked if we wanted to do a field, um, uh, estimate where they come out to let them know. It's no cost to us to do that, so if the board's okay, I'll just give them a verbal okay, tell them to start on it. Uh, they, they're not requiring any official thing from us to, to start that. But, uh, I wanna make sure we're covering it, all the areas that do not have it in the township. You have it on Holland, right?
Yeah, but I think they're light on Morrow.
Yeah, Morrow, Swarto.
Swarto.
And Starville.
Starville, right?
And I was, I was wondering, part of Holland might not have, I was told it didn't have it. I, I'm not sure, I haven't personally talked to anybody. It would be west of, of Starville. Or, or even, uh...
West of Falkirk, you mean?
Or Falkirk, yes.
Okay, yeah, I don't know that. I can find out tomorrow.
Okay. If, if you know of anybody. I thought they had it there, but I wasn't sure, I just wanna make sure we don't miss anybody. But I'm gonna tell them to go ahead and do that in-person survey. Township cleanup was, uh, this past weekend, and it was busy, to say the least. On the mainland Saturday, I think we had about seven dumpsters we filled. And on Harson's Island, between what we burned and what we hauled off, 31 dumpsters of junk. Yes.
That's great.
31 dumpsters. The island's floating a little higher today. Um, yeah, it was, it was a lot, they were busy. Kudos to the Harson's Island-St. Clair Flat Association, Less Us Brownfield, and our water department. That's a, that's a lot of work.
Those guys were working.
Yep. We do have Wi-Fi installed in our, in our park next door now. And I had a, one meeting with the state, some stakeholders between St. Clair, Marine City, Elginak, and us. They want, there's interest in starting a shuttle, uh, for basically for tourists to run between us. It wouldn't be free to the end user, but it'd be greatly reduced. And, uh, you know, we're trying to connect our, do cross-promotion between the three towns. Everyone seems pretty interested in. And I pointed them into the Blue Wire Transportation Authority. They could come up with, uh, probably half, subsidize half of it. And, uh, we'll see what, where, where it goes, uh, forward. But I'm not sure if it's something that would happen actually this, this summer or not yet. But I think it would, it would be a good thing, you know, connecting people who are staying out in arenas, hotels from up north. And, uh, it's, uh, that's what we have to do to make this all work, is cross-promote, so... Okay, what am I forgetting? DDA, uh, uh, music, huh? Our music in the park started this last week, and some other big events, and it's all going great. It's good to be back in business. June 9th, two days, is, uh, the clay, or not the Elginak, I'm sorry, San Clair County, uh, Day of Giving. And you can go on, it's called The Big Give. If you go to thebiggive, thebiggivescc.com. Uh, I know down river here, they have the Elginak Clay Historical Society, uh, is doing donations on it. And I'm not sure if, I think there is somebody else down here, I can't remember who it is. But I, I told them I would, uh, uh, give a shout-out. If you go to that site, then you can see who, uh, who's trying to get monies for donations. And I think that is about it. Got a lot of notes written all over here. But, uh, oh, yeah. Yeah, we're getting it geared up for Javi Nunez, that's in a few weeks. Okay. That's my supervisor's report. Next, we have public comments. Do we have any public comments?
I wanted to comment on the rental ordinance, so can we just talk about that then, or we have...
Yeah, let's do it now.
Okay.
If you wanna come up to the podium and... Still won't take us long to get into that.
Yes, excuse me. Gary Internet, on behalf of a group of rental property owners. We got, just noticed today that you were having this back on the agenda, and we had sent in some comments, and my clients had. And we'd like you to still postpone the adoption of this. The, um, in section two, you talk about the vacation rentals do not come to dominate any particular neighborhood. Well, if that's the reason for adopting this ordinance, it appears to be like a zoning portion. And I don't think there's been any demonstration in the record that any particular neighborhood in Clay Township is dominated by these short-rental facilities. Because there's nothing that the townships produce that shows a particular number in a particular area of the township. And we had given to you back on May 10th, a letter with supporting documents that included an aerial showing the locations in Ira Township and Clay. And I think there was about eight in both communities, so I don't think that's a domination of a particular use in either community. Then, in the ordinance in section three, in the definitions, you talk about single-family dwellings and exclude mobile homes. But there's other similar dwellings that a person should be able to rent out. And it seems to me that the way this is written, that if you have a single-family residence and you're gonna rent it out for less than 180 days, that somehow you fall underneath this ordinance. But if you had a four-unit apartment building in close proximity to the lake that somebody wanted to rent for 25 days or 35 days, that they could do that and not be within the provisions of this proposed ordinance. Then in section four, paragraph three, you had, require the homeowner's registered person that owns the facility to obtain an occupancy permit by the property owner and a zoning compliance permit. But if the zoning compliance permit is a requirement, that's generally saying what you're gonna be doing on a particular piece of property isn't compliance with the zoning district for that particular area where the property sits. So if you're gonna have a factory, it has to be in an industrial district. If you're gonna have a commercial with a drive-through, it generally has to be in a commercial district. So there's, to me, some inconsistency and not a clear provision because there's nothing in your ordinances that I see, other than like if you have a business, that you have to have a zoning compliance permit. If you build a single-family home in any one of your multifamily districts or an agricultural district, you don't have to get a zoning compliance permit for that. And most homes don't have that. So then, you're now gonna institute some new programs supposedly in your building department or planning that's gonna say, well, hey, here's your zoning compliance permit. So to me, that's not addressed. The, uh, and then, on page three, there are several of the provisions that my clients can live with with reference to the street address and having, uh, carbon monoxide and smoke detectors in the facility. The, uh, but in section G, you talk about the people having to have their facility open for inspection. Well, there's certain constitutional rights. You couldn't go to a motel and just knock on the door and say, I'm from Clay Township and I wanna inspect this facility. You gotta get a search warrant, and the owners of the property, they cannot necessarily give consent to their rental person or persons, the consent that one of your officials could come in. And then in, on page three in paragraph I, you have to have proof of homeowner's insurance and personal liability insurance. But I don't think there's anything in your Clay Township ordinances that require other facilities, whether it's a multifamily, or a commercial place, or McDonald's, or Sun Station boat builders, or any similar facility to provide liability insurance. If you have a liquor license, generally you have to have some proof of dram shop, but that's between the State Liquor Control Commission and the person that owns either the bar, tavern, restaurant, or a takeout facility. It's not something that's within the general jurisdiction of a township. The, uh, then you have that provision as to portable toilets. Well, I understand why that's in there, but then you have the language that it's not to be used as a permanent sanitary facility. Well, most of the time, portable toilets aren't used as the permanent sanitary facility. It's there on a temporary basis. Let's say if you go to New Baltimore here, when you have festivals, it's not unusual for the municipality or whosoever sponsoring the festival to have a series of portable toilets because it's a necessity of life. And if you're asking people to come from other communities in your own community to a certain geographic area, you gotta provide them with facilities. The, uh, and then on page four, in paragraph six, the maximum term of any rental shall be 180 days. So I guess if you run it for 181 days, you don't fall within this provision. And it would be similar to running an apartment or a house, and you don't have to register. And a person could always say to proposed tenant, I'm gonna rent it to you for 181 days, but they both agree, but not in their rental agreement, that after 10 days, they're going back to where they came from without any penalty. The, uh, and then in paragraph seven on page four, you have provisions as to the number of people in a bedroom. And you can't exceed four, but then it says plus two per finished floor. So if you had a bedroom with two bunk beds in it, or two queen-sized beds, you could have those four people, plus you can have two more if you have a two-story house. And then you have that provision that you can't have more than four bedrooms. Well, I'm from a family of 11 kids, plus my parents. We had more than four bedrooms. So, I gotta say, like, and some people nowadays have bigger homes, they might not use all their bedrooms all the time, but they have them from friends or family that's coming to stay. And then the, the way this is drafted, it precludes somebody from having a pull-out couch or a blow-up bed. And if that's the case, then Clay Township should adopt an ordinance that says if you have a single-family home, if your family and friends come over, you can't let them sleep on the couch, or a pull-out couch, or a blow-up bed. Well, when my daughter first graduated from Michigan State, she moved to Northern Illinois because she had a good job over there. And when my wife and I went to visit, my wife and my daughter slept in her bed. I slept on a blow-up bed, and like after a while, the one part didn't blow, so it was like you slept on a diagonal so that your head was up and down. And so if Clay Township is gonna get in the business of regulating those things, then it has to be uniform. And you can't just segregate this group out, saying you can't do this, but other places can. Because to me, if you adopt that and you end up having litigation, I think you guys are in bad straits. But it's good for the lawyers, I guess. The, uh, seeing then in paragraph eight, and I had put this in my written comments, that if you have an ordinance in your township, everybody's bound, whether they're a visitor, a renter, or just passing through, to obey your ordinance. And if you want people to put out summaries, person A might think that this is a good summary, and B has something else, and C has something else. But then when your inspector comes around, that person might not like the summaries that the person put together because they forgot to include something. Well, then you're gonna give them a ticket, and then if they get a few tickets, you're gonna put them out of business. I don't think you have any other ordinance that says if you violate something three times, that you're out of business.
Have you lost your driver's license? Just saying.
What's that? Yeah, if you get too many points on your driver's license, you lose it, but not because what Clay Township does. It's because the Secretary of State, in their rules and regulations, and in the Motor Vehicle Code that says you accumulate 12 points in two years, you can't drive. And then you can go to court and get a restricted license. But to take it away totally is a pretty heavy burden and a pretty heavy punishment. And it's not proportionate to what's allegedly transpired. The, uh, because that's the provisions, the, uh, in section five, where you have the penalties. And, you know, to make it a misdemeanor and a $500 fine, well, if the court has that within its purview, they might fine the person the maximum amount because the revenue goes to the court. And the district courts, you know, part of their program is revenue. The, um, because on page six in paragraph four, that's where you have that provision that if you get your registration revoked, that you're out of business for a year. It seems to us, the property owners, that a lot of these provisions, and we, when we were here the last time, we thought maybe there would be some cooperative effort of people, representatives from this group, to meet with some township officials, not in violation of the Open Meetings Act, to try to hammer out some language. And we did exchange some documents, but then this came on. And if Sarah hadn't been checking the website, we wouldn't even been here tonight because she called me early this afternoon and said, hey, this is, you know, back on the agenda. So it's not like you don't know who the participants are, and there'd be more people here tonight, but it was short giving them notice. So we would just ask that you take those things into consideration and table it so that maybe we can have an informal meeting to work out just the registration aspect. Because there is legislation pending, there's a House bill and a Senate bill. Well, if Clay Township adopts something that's in contravention of that statute, I think that helps my clients. And so until the state does something, it seems to me, if you're the local municipality, you should wait till the state acts. Because if you jump the gun and you do something that's contrary to the state statute, I think you're gonna lose in court. And that's, and for 26 years, I represented municipalities. And the last 20-some, I've been on the other side of the podium, so I, I know how it works. And, uh, hopefully you'll take that into consideration. In my previous letter, I noted too that if you have certain restrictions as to who can live in a house, there's already a Michigan Supreme Court case from 1984 that says, you know, that is an unconstitutional act by the municipality. And if you act unconstitutionally, you can be behind the eight ball. So if you have any questions, I'd try to answer them, and hopefully you'll postpone it, maybe we'll have a meeting and then go from there.
All right, thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Mike, how you doing?
Great, Artie, how are you?
Good.
My name's Mike Bumbus, my address is 1713 St. Clair River Drive. And Artie's already mentioned it, but both of us belong to the Elginak Clay Community Foundation, which is part of the St. Clair County Community Foundation. And Wednesday is what we call the Big Give, or the Day of Giving. We have three different groups. Yes, in, in our area, that will be participating in the Big Give, Elginak Clay, I'm here, so I'll say Clay-Elginak Historical Society, um, is raising money, they need a new roof. And I don't know if you've been there recently, but those museums are great, if you ever get a chance, stop by. Everything costs money. Things need to be fixed. Those are some antique buildings, they need support on getting new roof. Those are some antique buildings, they need support on getting a new roof, and just maintaining the building. The Band Boosters, we know from years and years of cuts and this and that, schools are always in desperate need for money. So the Band Boosters for Equipment are raising money. Algenack Alive, which I'm part of, and Terry Stoneburnard, mayor of Algenack, is also part of, we are raising money for garland and bows for the boardwalk for Christmas. And if you saw Christmas in Algenack, and most of us, when you say Clay-Algenack, we all think of the same thing, we're just one big family thing. The trees look the best I've ever seen. Well, this year, we want to add garland rope on the fence, you know, by the river, and big bows. In the past, to save money, we've actually taken red trashcan bags and cut them up to make bows. We'd kind of like to get a tiny bit more professional. So this runs from midnight to midnight on Wednesday. You go to thebiggivescc.com to donate.
Com or org?
I think it's com.
Okay.
But if that doesn't work, try org.
The Big?
The Big Give, S-C-C.
S as in Sam?
Correct.
C-C?
Right.
Dot. I'll try org first.
Okay.
It's not org.
Okay.
Okay, so it's com. And, you know, we're going to be, especially you guys, come on, we're going to be calling you on the phone anyways, give us some money from all the three groups, you know. But if you know friends, or you want to jump the gun, get on that internet. And if you're not internet savvy, or your friends who you're going to all tell, you know, who may not be internet savvy, it's nothing wrong with stopping by Historical Society and dropping off a check, or calling the people on the Band Boosters and giving them a check, or even Algenack Alive, you can stop at the Algenack City Hall, that's where we're going to be all day long. So it's really a good thing, it brings the community together, all those three groups. You're benefiting our history, benefiting the youth on the opposite end, or just benefiting our Christmas spirit and what we're doing there. So I hope you all consider donating, and more than that, get your friends, families, and acquaintances. Between all of us on Algenack City Council, and all of you guys on Clay, we know just about everybody in our communities. So please help us, and push this a little bit, and we want to be successful, okay?
Thanks, Michael.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Okay, see, now, moving right along, we have the consent agenda. I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the board meeting minutes of May 17, 2021, and check reports for checks paid in between meetings and payroll.
I support.
Motion and support, and discussion. Gary Nun, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, next on our unfinished business, we have our vacation rental ordinance. And I'll start out, we did, we had, on our last meeting, we had a lot of public comments, we did a public hearing, which we really didn't have to, but I thought it'd be wise, and we did make some changes. Significantly, it was 130 days, or we're at 30 days, and we can, our attorney says we can make that any day limit we wanted. If you want to make it 365 days, we could, I just said, you know, we can do 180, or whatever, I'm just letting the board know, because they brought up the point, well, what if they rented for 181 days, that type of a thing. So that we can change to anything. And truth be known, I think, and I've talked to a few of you, I think even more importantly than this ordinance, we need to pass a regular rental ordinance. So the argument of, well, you're regulating the short term, but not the long-term one, that's not fair, that's going to be a short-term thing, I mean, you put the car before the horse, or whatever. We did change, it was a good point, we had, it was two occupants per bedroom, you say, hey, we have, some places have bigger bedrooms than others, and some, so we went with International Building Code, definition of what a bedroom can hold as far as occupancy, and it's 70 square feet, and a bedroom is for one person, and additional 50 square feet for every additional person. So if two people, it'd be 120 square feet, four people, it'd be 220 square feet. And I think that would be a part of the application, how many square feet is your bedroom, and that's how we would determine how many occupants it is. That's right by the International Building Code specs. I think that takes in a lot of, I mean, you can come up with all kinds of scenarios and everything, but I think this would take care of most of the issues as far as occupancy. And it is, we do allow two people per level, so if they do have a couch that folds out in the bed, in the living room, you know, that accomplishes that, too. We did adjust, what was presented for parking, we're allowing gravel or stone driveways, and not just paved. And then, let's see, as far as inspection, we did put in, I know Gary was saying how, you know, constitutionally, we did put in the clause with reasonable and proper notice of the building inspector to allow inspection. I think that's more than adequate, myself. I did, you know, a lot of these things that we have in there, many, many other communities have the exact same wording in there, and they're not being hauled off to the Supreme Court, as of lately, that I know of. And I do realize that there's legislation at the state, which is being considered, and it's in the House right now, and is it the House? I don't know, they're both. But, you know, that could be two years before anything's passed, I mean, they haven't even figured out with how they're handling the mining and stuff that's been going on for two years, it, who knows? And this really doesn't kick in for six months anyhow. You know, the ordinance does, but then we give a six-months window, so. I don't think, I don't know if it would be really prudent if we wait just to see what another government body does, and then react, I mean, this board's always been proactive. So my, I sent it out to everybody, as far as the point, well, what if we have more than four bedrooms, what if we have six or seven bedrooms? You know, I live, you've got to put yourself in other people's position. If you're living next to a house that they, it was a family home dwelling, now all of a sudden, they're renting it, would you want 18 people, new people there every weekend, staying there? You know, some people might have a problem with that, others don't, that's the question, you know, we have to ask. And if it's a large bedroom, you know, that possibility is there. As far as the studio, renting a bedroom or a studio, I've rented single-bedroom rooms through this, and there was no problem, and we don't prevent that, I don't believe, in They, they're saying about us, they have to, we want them to display the, some of the local ordinances, and I, we would probably come up with that verbiage for them as far as the noise ordinance, and maybe bonfires, or something like that, and that could be changed and tweaked as we go. But I've rented these things all over the country, and every place I said, they had a book on the table in the kitchen, has your Wi-Fi password in there, you know, how the code is to this room, or that room, and local rules. And in there, they had local ordinances in those, it was just part of the notebook that they put out. And as far as, you know, Gary was mentioning about, well, you know, you shouldn't, we shouldn't be able to revoke someone's permit if it's issued, I disagree with that. If there is, it probably won't happen, but if there is someone that is a continual problem that we have to respond to, we should have the right to say, you know what, you can't do this anymore, you're going to take a little vacation from it and think about it. Otherwise, we're setting ourselves up, and the police up, for failure. That's my own personal feelings, but, I don't know, I'll open up for the board's discussion.
Well, you know, I'm not usually a big fan of telling somebody what they can or can't do with their property.
Neither am I, I have a hard time with it.
I have a very hard time with it. I mean, I think the ordinance information just should be, is just common sense, if you're going to rent your place, you'd want your residents, or your renters, to know, hey, this is when, you know...
And you want them to be good neighbors.
Right. You know, you can have a fire, you can't have a bonfire, if you do, it has to be in this pit, you know, or whatever, you know, contact information, in case there's an emergency of the property manager, or the police department. As far as how many people are in it, or who they can rent to, I mean, I'm out.
I agree with Cindy.
I just want it to be safe, you know, and the only reason why we kind of started looking into this is because we know there are some being rented that don't even have furnaces, that, you know, are unsafe. So I think there needs to be something to make sure that these renters are safe when they're renting, and it's not just the Airbnbs, or the VRBOs, or the short term, it's the long term as well. You know, when you don't have steps going out the back on a two-story, when you're only renting the top, that's a problem.
Yep.
So those are my concerns.
Doesn't that violate other codes, though?
Oh, yes.
I don't know that we'd need an ordinance to take care of that, I mean, my opinion is we have enough on our hands trying to, you know, police everything else, the blight in the area and all that, that we've been challenged with. And I don't see that we have that big of a problem, of, you know, a lot of people complaining. I don't want to give these people misdemeanors, I don't want to tell them how many they can have in their home, I just, I'm not for it.
Well, that's why I went with the International Building Code, as far as home occupants, how many are allowed in a home?
It's something that was adopted before your tenure.
Right.
We did that, and when we upgraded our building department shortly after our officials...
I'm in favor of a registration policy, or ordinance, that they have to register, but I really don't want to put, what is this, nine pages of, you know, seven pages of rules that they have to follow it, just not for it.
I mean, unfortunately, the only problems we've had are the neighbors coming that just don't want the places next to them to be rentals, but they're going to be rentals regardless.
Right.
And I'm sure everyone could agree that you'd rather have somebody there for a weekend that may be uncomfortable to be next to renting, than somebody that moves in and rents for a year, and then you're stuck with them for a year, or maybe five, or, you know.
Well, we kind of discussed how that could be arranged, they could make their own association and address it that way.
At one area.
In that area, because that's the only area where there's a problem, so, you know, we let them know, and if they need assistance with that, I mean, if we have to help them to put that together.
Let me ask the board, is it prudent for us to wait till there's a problem before we pass an ordinance? Or can we be proactive and pass the ordinance to, because these are more and more popular, and they're going to be growing, and they're great for our community, I'm not down on them at all. I just want to make sure that they're an attribute, and not a deterrent.
No, but I think initially, we need to know where they are, and that they're safe.
Right.
But you're right, I don't think we need nine pages of...
I think a registration, so that we can address any issues, so that we know who they are, and that they're renting, is just a nice starting point, that's all we kind of need for now.
You think we should do an inspection? I do 100%, because if everybody, 90% of the people are honest, but there's 10% that aren't, and there's going to be violations.
So we, meaning our building official?
Yes.
Okay.
I think this is good starting place for us, and I like, maybe so if you've got nine pages, or whatever, but I think it's a place to start, and for our community. I'm off with too many rules.
I don't, I don't support this at this time, like, I can't support this at this time. And probably the most, the largest underlying factor is the state of Michigan, and what a volatile the issue this really is. I don't want to be the forerunners when we've got a topic that is this hot, right? We could pass this ordinance today, and in three weeks, we could have egg on our face, have to revoke the ordinance, and have to change it up. So I really don't want to have that happen. I want to have a document that keeps the occupants safe, I want to have a document that gives our local police the ability to shut something down that, you know, could be negative, or looked at negatively in our municipality. But outside of that, this board in the last five years has done a really, really good job of not overstepping our boundaries. We've prided ourselves on that. And this may be a document that we have to back away from for a week, for a month, I'm not sure, but I'd feel more comfortable if I saw the state bring something down, which we had to abide by, and then at that time, if we need additional rules, then we could adopt an ordinance at that time. Now, Artie, I do know it moves slow, and I'm with you.
How long do we wait?
I would make a motion by the end of summer, that we move on this. I think we'd have a good feel for what's going on, I think we'll have another busy season, and to whether or not we need to institute more control, more rules, additional ordinances, that's my opinion, I'm one of seven.
Chief, you have any comments on this one?
Well, I think like everybody else here...
Can you come up here? Thank you, chief.
I, too, have used them several times. I think they're, definitely can be a huge asset to our community, and a great draw to our community, let's face it, especially the kind of community that we have here, we're a huge tourist destination, so. But with that being said, I also agree, I'm of the same feelings that I don't like to tell people what they can and can't do with the property they own. However, in going with like Artie's saying, too, I think there has to be some checks and balances, if you're going to do this as a for-profit, and you're going to be bringing people in out of state, or things like that, I think people should be able to know that we're taking steps to make sure that they're safe in where they're coming, and what they're renting. How that can be done, I don't know, that's obviously outside my scope, but I think we do need to look as far as, okay, who owns the property? Get a feel for, okay, have they done this in other communities? Have they had issues in other communities? I think backgrounds is something that's not too much to ask for. What has been your track record and your history with this? Let's face it, we all know, we've got renters in our, some people that rent homes in our community, that we have a really hard time with. Right down to some of the people that they bring in, and for reasons that they bring them in. We know what we deal with there, so I think personally, with these rentals, 99% of the time, these people's property are kept up better than most, because the only way you're going to rent them out, and the only way you're going to rent them out is if people are giving you good reviews out there. But I still think that there's still that 1% that could bite us, and if I'm the guy that's living next door to one of these rentals, I want to make sure that, you know, my local authorities are doing the best thing they can do to weed this out, to make sure it's the right kind of people that are actually in business for this. We obviously, you know, as the police department, we see most of the places in these communities on a different scale than, than others. And a lot of them, good portion are rentals. And that all comes back to the people that are, a lot of times, that are the people that are renting them out. Because it's not just one unit. You can see them all over a different place and it turns out to be the same person is the landlord. And they don't vet the people that come in. So I think it's, it's, like what you're saying, Chris, it's no different than our profession. Trying to get ahead of something that is already being litigated is pretty tough. Because let's face it, once you go through and you put the ordinance out, as soon as the state changes something, that trumps it. And you don't wanna be on that end of it. So I know I've done some reading on this too and it is a hot topic and I think there's no doubt our state's gonna move on this and they're gonna do something with it because they have to. But, you know, I, I guess myself, personally, if it's, if we haven't got the issue right now, we're not getting the complaints on these properties right now, I, I think what Chris is saying is, let's give it a little bit of time. Let's see what our state's coming up with on this. And then it gives you a little better idea too, come towards the end of the busy season, where do we end up with this? Did, did we experience any problems? Gives us a better idea of, okay, what do we need to look at putting into an ordinance to eliminate, you know, what we dealt with this past summer? If there's nothing, that gives us a better idea there too. But I love the fact of them coming in. I, I really do. Especially with our community, the way we're unique, there's no doubt.
That's the draw.
I mean, I, I live next to an Airbnb.
And it's probably great.
They are. And they had four people from Kentucky with two boats and they had a great weekend and I went over there, talked to them around their fire and it's great. What, what do you think is, can we take a few minutes and just go through these? Let's, let's go to page five. Number 10, parking. All parking shall be accommodated on-site within a garage or paved gravel stone driveway. And it'll be on the, on the, on the site plan. Is that too restrictive? You know, they're gonna park on, on a parking lot or a driveway? I mean, you don't want cars all over someone's yard every, every other week if you live, if they live next to you.
I just questioned the site plan. Will they have to pay, they'll have to pay for a site plan?
Well, they can draw it up on it. You can draw up a site plan on a piece of paper like this.
But they don't need to do anything else? Just turn that into the building department and that's it?
I mean, I don't think that's too restrictive. Now, I'm working backwards. Number nine, no attic or basement shall be used to determine the maximum number of occupancy. I think that's a fire issue and a safety issue.
What if they have an egress option?
You know, that could be looked at. I, I don't have too much of a problem with that, but it goes under the Michigan Construction Code.
Yeah.
So it's in there. It goes under Michigan Construction Code and Michigan Residential Code to determine if that's reasonable or not. And that would be up to our billing official.
Is that something that we inspect and enforce for regular residential homes? That, that's, this is my issue.
Well, we don't have.
We can't go in even if it is a rental and say, oh, you have one person, too many.
Well, we're not gonna go in there, but if, you know, oh, you're having a party. Well, we can't prove if they're spending the night there or not.
Exactly.
But, but we can see what they're advertising for.
I don't wanna see something in there that is something we can't enforce.
So you have a question on nine?
It's only a problem when it's a problem.
Right. You know, if, God forbid, we have a fire and there's someone stuck in the attic and they, and they die.
Chief Rose has got input on this, absolutely.
They die.
We need to make sure that.
Okay, should we pass an ordinance then, you know? But I, I think it's.
I mean, everywhere you go, there are occupancy or capacity limits, I mean, everywhere.
Each vacation rental shall post clearly visible location near the primary building entrance, for the primary building entrance. Knows the copies of local, we, we went over that with the local ordinances. You know, they, they should have a map of how to get out of the place during a fire or something. That's not too unreasonable.
No, but if that's where we're going, then that's what our number eight should say.
Right.
This is, this is a little broad.
You're saying that the places you go to, they have a book? Okay, now you're asking them to post it, so they gotta take up wall space that could be, you know.
Well, on the second floor, usually they have a map or they put it behind the door. I've seen it many times. You know, you don't have lit, lit exit signs, but there's a map, you know, where their exits are. That's not too unreasonable, I don't think.
You wanna post up additional safety concerns?
The maximum number of occupants not to exceed the capacity defined by section two, blah, blah, blah. That's the, that's the International Building Code for occupancy of a bedroom.
But if they can sleep on a pull-out couch in the living room.
We love that.
They can't be counted because it's not a bedroom, right?
Well, no, we do.
That's two per finished floor.
Two per finished floor, too. So much per bedroom and two per finished floor.
I don't wanna tell them how many people they can be there.
But, okay, that, that's a question.
You don't? I think I could probably get behind that one a little bit. At least, at least have a limit.
To the planning commission meetings where they were saying.
You haven't seen the other side.
Coming in at one time.
And it's like the other thing, it's only a problem when it's a problem. Nobody's gonna come there and take inventory of who's staying there. It's only when the PD or the, the fire department have to go there, then we're gonna know, right? We're not gonna, we're not checking in on Friday afternoon counting guests. It's not, that's not what it's for. So I could, I could get behind that one.
A hundred and eighty days, that could be three hundred and sixty-five days and we have a one-year and over ordinance for, that's gonna be a little harder than I, for that one, I seriously want furnaces inspected to make sure they're safe. A yearly inspection on those. Remember, these people are doing this for profit. And they are making money. Otherwise, there wouldn't be so many of them and, and I, I think we owe it to people visiting our community that they're safe. And like I say, ninety percent of them, they probably are, but there are ten percent that, you know what, I'm not gonna spend twenty dollars for a CO2 alarm. You know, and.
I don't, I don't think anybody had an argument over the.
No, I know.
The CO2 or the smoke detectors.
I just don't know how, when they do these inspections, I mean, how crazy are they gonna get about fixing, well, you gotta fix this, you gotta fix that? I mean, it's one thing to make sure it's safe, but, you know. I know when my dad rented an apartment to my sister, his own daughter in Mount Clemens, they would go crazy. You know, he had to, and it was, everything was perfectly fine, but he'd have to spend, you know, two, three thousand dollars after they left to do stupid little things, you know. So, I mean, I think.
Anything in here is big money, though.
Well, I'm just, I mean, if you're just talking that, you know, the furnace and the smoke alarm and the.
We're just talking not even furnace in here, just smoke alarms.
I mean, when you just say inspection, it does, I want it to be specific. There's just certain things they're not gonna.
Well, I'm not gonna handcuff our billing inspector and if he sees something unsafe, that is unsafe in any type of home, he can't do anything on it because it is a rental.
It's, still should be subject to the same inspection process as a, a new build, for example.
Who knows when the state's gonna come in and have, you know, make a choice? They got so much on their plate up there right now and they, they're so behind the times.
Okay, we're given a six months grace period to register. That seems pretty okay. No case shall portable toilets or PVs be placed or maintained on the, as a permanent sanitary. We have a, a separate portage on rent or ordinance. And that's basically what it says. You cannot have a long-term, you can have it for a event or a weekend, but you can't have a portage on long-term install on your property. And that's a separate ordinance. So even if that was out, the portage on would still go.
Which, for sake of the document, could be out. It's duplication. We already had, we already had a problem, which is why we addressed this earlier.
But we wanna be clear.
We had a significant problem locally. That we had to enforce something like this. If somebody's having a party and they wanna bring one out, that, this is not what the ordinance is for. This is more of a permanent type structure.
I think it needs to be clear, though, because there's one gentleman here, he has a, a portage on outside of his Airbnb.
Yep, I, I would not support that. If it's a short-term, you know.
Personal insurance and renters, or, or homeowners insurance and personal liability insurance for renter, the occupants. I mean, I've seen that in a lot of them. Gary's saying, oh, that's, you know.
Well, you don't require that of a guy has an apartment building, that he has insurance for his building or his occupancy?
Well, we're about to do a, 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 a runner's ordinance. It's just the cart before the horse. I don't know if that's in it or not. We're, so I don't wanna hear that argument.
Could I go back to the portable toilets a minute? So the guy's got a portable toilet there now?
Yes.
And have, we already have rules for that, so why haven't we went there and told him he can't keep it?
Well, we're working on that, but if it's in here too, it's just more cheap.
Okay, well, I mean.
Well, actually, because when we had high water emergency, we allowed them during the high water. But that's over with. Okay, anyone have a problem with the floor plan? You know, require the floor plan with the bedrooms?
That submitted at what, time of registration or something? No problem with that.
I don't have a problem with, we give them reasonable.
Make sure somehow that gets over to our, our police chief and our fire chief, though.
Right.
So they have an, an understanding of it.
I don't have a problem upon reasonable notice. We can inspect the dwelling. Does anybody have an issue with that?
Yeah, I don't think the intent is to go there when they're renting it out and displace their guests.
But that's not what it says. It says.
But it doesn't say that it does.
Well, but if you have a police officer or somebody, that billing official that thinks that they have, the informator, if you're bored, you go and inspect whenever they think those is appropriate, they may say I'm coming in fifteen minutes.
You could say that about every ordinance on the books. If we have a rogue cop. And if we did, we would be calling the chief and I'm sure the chief and Lieutenant Stock will be handling it internally.
But if you don't have a significant problem, no.
So we gotta wait till we have a significant problem?
But like the one trustee said, wait till the end of the summer. Let these people that have them give you a.
That's the board decision. We're gonna move on. Let's see. Okay, we got the F, the smoke alarms and fire extinguishers. I don't see, I don't think there's any problem with that one. Maximum number of occupants. That is some question, but I like the International Billing Code myself, but.
That was one of the first things we did.
I don't see, other than the occupancies, too many things that are real controversial. Does anybody else?
I don't have the misdemeanor, the five hundred dollar fine.
I do.
And there's several misdemeanors, like if they didn't fix it for three days, they got three misdemeanors and a hundred dollar fine.
That's potential, but that's not usually how it works. I mean, that gives, if we have someone that's a compulsive problem, that option is there. But, you know, it's up to the judge, the courts, and it's not up to us. But I, I know just dealing with building issues, people lie to you. They'll, they'll tell you half-truths and they'll prolong things six, eight months. And I'm just, I'm so tired of it. Down the same road that they're having a lot of these issues with, you know. I had one guy.
We have a majority of owners here, correct?
Yeah, we don't have anybody that's on the other side.
So you guys are rated as the people that are renting? And then you also rate your renters, correct?
Yep.
So do you also check your potential renters' ratings before you book them or do you typically just book them because they wanna rent it?
Some people do, some people don't. I've rented them where they just, they'll take anybody. I, I've, I've rented, I, I've taken where they actually call you up and interview you a little bit.
I don't want my house.
Some do, some don't.
No.
People that come to our house usually have a hundred to a hundred fifty thousand dollar boat. System between the truck and the boat. And the only problem with the noise ordinance is.
Yeah.
The neighbors waking them up.
I guess.
They fish at seven AM and fish till dark.
Yeah.
And they go to bed at seven o'clock or eight at night. And the only thing we worry about is them getting woken up, not any of the neighbors.
Mr. Supervisor, I'd like to interrupt. We are no longer on public comments.
Let's stop. This is a board discussion.
This is a board discussion.
I had a question I wanted answered.
Right.
Cindy asked.
I mean, how many, I mean, I don't see too much of, that's very controversy. I, I just don't see it. There's occupancies per bedroom. That's only one.
I have a big issue with that.
Right, you do, but that's only one in the whole ordinance.
I don't like G.
What's G? Statement?
Robber's consent to inspections. So if you put the word annual inspection in there.
Do we wanna require an annual?
Nope.
Neither do I.
Nope. I, I maybe want the option. If we have a problem, we can set up an inspection.
Right.
But I don't want this to happen to them, you know, two, three, four times a year.
Right, upon reasonable request.
That's overkill.
I don't wanna do an annual. I, I would hope we could do a self-audit. But we have the right to inspect if we're having significant problems.
Yeah, but this doesn't, this doesn't state that.
Well, we can tweak it.
I got this.
We, we can tweak it.
Yeah.
I, I have no problem with that.
Yeah, if we could just put a, some kind of a limitation on that.
G. You know, I, I would hope we could do, you know, and this renews every other year, I would hope we could almost do a, a self-audit inspection.
Because they did mention before at our last meeting that they get inspections with their insurance.
If they have insurance, but they don't wanna have insurance.
That's not what they're saying. They don't wanna disclose to the township their insurance, because you don't make anybody else disclose their insurance to the township. There's a.
Okay, so if we wanna talk to the fire chief about, you know, potential safety inspection, right? We could put something together. He's got a bunch of, you know, he's got young people and cadets and stuff that probably we could, we could do some kind of a wellness visit.
Yeah.
We don't wanna use it as a moneymaker. We just wanna make sure they're safe.
It's against law for us to make money on it. We haven't even talked about rates. They don't wanna pay more than twenty-five dollars. Right?
Right.
You're gonna pay more than twenty-five dollars. Our billing inspector to walk through a house is worth more than twenty-five dollars. It's a board decision.
You want people to register.
It's a board decision. It's a board decision. It's a board decision. So like I say, with a little bit of tweak, I don't see a whole lot of, if you get in, in the nuts and bolts. There's not much. They, they don't like the fine because, oh, if someone, i- i- if, if, if someone's really, we're, we're being mean and everything, they, they could be fined five hundred dollars, but do you wanna take that away from the courts if a judge thinks it's, something deserves that?
Well, you're saying automatically if they're gonna get a misdemeanor, automatically.
Our blight is this.
But somebody has to be, there has to be a problem present, right? And if there's a problem present, then likely PD's gonna go out there.
Yep.
Clay's finest, right? They still have every right to issue petition, loitering, drunken disorderly.
To the renters, but not the property owners.
Correct.
Right. Difference. They, they don't want themselves to be liable, the owners.
And they don't want, and, and we're speaking, we're painting with a broad brush here. They don't want those kind of tenants either.
Right, I understand, but.
So, what are we trying to fine them for?
Violations whatever may come up. I don't know what it's gonna be.
Well, you say, you know, that it's the same for blight, but they get warnings with blight. If we catch them with one person too many in there, right, boom, they got a misdemeanor. They don't get a warning, like, don't have that again. Well, but this allows us to do that if we wanted to.
Okay, you can stand at a stop sign, and every time someone rolls in, you could write a ticket, but does it happen?
I'm just saying, you, you know, when you write something like that, it. I don't know, I, it's just too much control.
Well, and we know what our intentions are, but what about the unintended consequences seven years from now when we're not here? That somebody takes that and pushes it right to the opposite extreme. And Chief Coach is not the one that's at our department, and they, the, the new chief does not have that same mind frame. We're laying down is here for a long time to come until somebody repeals it.
They change the ordinance then, then whoever's on the board.
Well, it's a little bit easier for them to come in at that point when they're changing the ordinance, than just all of a sudden somebody started enforcing something that was never enforced for ten, fifteen years, in a different way, because they can.
The penalty may not exceed five hundred dollars or ninety days in jail. Most judges are gonna say maximum fine five hundred dollars. If you don't pay it, you get ninety days.
But does it say specifically what that would be issued for?
But, but no, for anything.
For anything that they kind of.
The judges, it's the judge's decision. It's not our decision, it's not chief's decision. It's the judge's decision, and he's an elected official too. That's why he's there.
But then we have to pay for litigation too, so.
We don't.
Well, just me, but that's a non-starter for me, as the occupancy.
So. So we have potential disagreement with the penalty, and G needs to be tweaked.
The only thing I agree with is registration. I don't like it, any of the rest of it. Registration and safety is the only two factors for me.
Okay, how do we prove the safety, though? We have to inspect. So we need the right to go in.
Right, well.
So.
I'm sure, put something simple together for that, right?
That's pretty much what it is, I think.
There's a lot more in there than that.
We wanna inspect. Oh, no, come back later. No.
How long they can rent it for? I mean, there's a lot of things in here, as pages.
Definitions.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just think we're not inventing short-term rentals. They, they're already, they already exist. That's what.
Everything in here I've seen on every other, or other short-term rental ordinances. In Michigan, in Florida, I looked at a couple in Ohio, everything is in, that, is in here, is in probably fifty others. I assume it's working there. Um, why, why do you think it wouldn't work here? I get that the state's going to do something sooner or later. Uh, usually hot topics, it's later. Um, they, they, like I say, they've been talking about, uh,
Marijuana, whatever.
Well, mar- not marijuana, but like the, the mining and, and excavate, you know? And they, they still haven't figured that one out. Um, that was a hot topic last year, two years ago, three years ago.
We just don't have any real problems in the community, so.
Oh, yeah, I mean, you, you, I, I'll, I can let your phone up if you want.
I thought it was just the one neighborhood. That's what I asked, and that's what they said.
I, I could let your phone up.
How many, what's going on? Like, it's not just that one area? Tell me.
No, it's multiple streets.
Yeah. I, I've had a lot of people, actually, on, on Flamengo and a couple others, Charlie, I'm glad you're doing this, cuz I really wouldn't want this next to me. It's not, if it's not controlled. And like to Mike's point, our chief, if there is a problem, we have, if there is a problem, we have to know who to call. You know, you roll up, you're talking, you're not talking to the owner of the property, you're, 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 you're talking to a guest. We, we.
Well, that's why I said registration's important, but.
Exactly. And for that, you need an ordinance.
And giving you a contact person for the fire department.
Yeah, we know, Gary.
Yep.
So, I, I would entertain a motion that we postpone this. I'll tweak G and a couple others, and then when I send it out, please give me feedback.
And I think we need to, um, contact, because I think what we've had for the last two meetings are exemplary rental owners. And we haven't had any of the people who are claiming to be living next door to a nightmare. And so I think that since, you know, some of the other members have not heard the planning commission meeting, either review those meetings, or we need to have those people come in so that you can get an idea of what's happening when there's a bad.
There was planning commission meetings where the public hearings lasted an hour and a half, two hours, with people that don't want them.
We'll review them.
How long do you wanna postpone this for?
Well, we don't have to give a specific date, but I would, um.
No, but without a date, it just automatically goes under unfinished business, and then you have these people trucking out here again next meeting, and we may not address it, so.
And there's like no notice.
Well, the agenda's posted on Thursday.
Well, I emailed you guys. I emailed, Sarah, I emailed you, I emailed Gary. I, I goes, this is the, the draft that we're looking at.
Right. But what we're saying is you didn't give us notice it was gonna be on the agenda tonight.
Believe me, it's gonna be hot.
I would support a September sixth revisiting. Um, I would encourage the changes to be made. Already, if you wanna send that back out, and then, and then at least we've got something on paper. If we wanna move that up, or if we have a problem, we can move that up.
I personally don't wanna wait that long.
Um, yes, let me formalize that.
This deals with our community.
Joanne, where's the problem at? Can you, can you cite me a specific example today of something we need this tomorrow?
No, no, I can't.
Okay, cuz I can't either. I can't either. So that's why I'm just pumping the brakes just a little bit. I can get behind this document. I can.
Mm-hmm, okay.
I just wanna make sure it's really, really good, and I think we're close. I don't think we're quite there yet.
Well, you just said he was gonna tweak a few of them, and then we'll go.
Yup.
Old business. Unfinished business, pardon me. Unfinished business.
Chris has a motion to propose. We'll see if it goes.
I make a motion to, A, modify the existing rental ordinances per our discussions tonight, and B, revisit this topic at our first board meeting in September, which is Monday, the sixth.
I'd support it.
Any more discussion? Let's do a roll call vote.
Oh, I don't even know where I left off. Kristy Hilton?
No.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
No.
Arty Bryson?
I vote? I'm gonna vote no, but I would support a thirty day, uh, to do it in August. So that motion died, but I, I would make the mo- same motion, but we do it in our first meeting, uh, in August.
That's your motion?
Yes.
Support.
Okay, I have a motion of support.
August second?
Yup, our first meeting in August.
That's Monday, the second.
I don't like kicking the can down that far.
That's fine, support.
We got support, Chrissy. Any more discussion? Roll the call?
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Arty Bryson?
Yes.
Kristy Hilton?
Yes.
Any motion carries?
That was easy.
Yup. That's what it's all about. It's, this is good. It's all about debate and consensus.
Yup.
I'm serious. This is, this is, this is great. It's how it's supposed to work. It's not right, Gary.
That's right. And in the meantime, we'll give you some insight.
All right, I'm sure you will.
Well, you want insight from the public.
That's right.
We do.
All right, we're gonna.
Public hearing, sir.
We're gonna press on.
Yeah.
All right, uh, first thing we have is on your new business is our presentation discussion from Enterprise Lease Vehicles. Mike, I, I met with these guys via Zoom, and.
Yeah, hold on. This is a brief synopsis of what we're looking at doing here.
Yes, thank you.
No, not really. I figure they might at least give us a breeze.
Maybe some of the germs out here.
Okay, um, uh, real brief, this is, uh, something we've been working on, um, for a few months now. And I've been talking with other colleagues who brought this to my attention, um, and other municipalities, that they've gone this same route. And that is, uh, leasing their vehicles opposed to buying their vehicles. And the gentlemen that are here from Enterprise, they're gonna go over this a little bit with you, and, and talking with other municipalities and that. It's amazing, the, the savings that, one, that you're getting, two, the vehicles that you're having are newer vehicles, which is way less maintenance on them. Um, the overall number of vehicles that we can have in our fleet opposed to buying them, big difference as far as that goes. And then the, the huge part of this is the resale value. Because we buy them at the government rate. When we go and we turn these over to sell them, which Enterprise also does for us, now we're talking, they've got a fleet of two million vehicles out there, so these guys know what they're doing and getting rid of these vehicles. You're talking, we're, I'll give you a case in point, talking to someone that, uh, uh, John DeBoyer was talking to, Harrison Township. They recently sold a two thousand fifteen Ford F-150 for them. They got three thousand dollars over what they paid for it in two thousand fifteen. And this is, is not just a fluke. This is something that they're regularly seeing, because of what we pay for the vehicles. So at the end of the day, it's really saving us money, not only on that aspect, but also on the aspect of the vehicle maintenance. Less miles on these vehicles, turning them over earlier means just that, less maintenance. Cuz let's face it, like, right now, our vehicle with the least miles over there has got over eighty thousand miles on it, and that's a two thousand twenty. Um, we put a lot of miles. I, we, we cover a lot of area, which you know. So, we really put a lot of miles on these vehicles, and that's where we're looking is, okay, we'd be able to have a fleet of larger, a larger fleet, which we'd be able to rotate these vehicles, keeping less miles on these vehicles, and then when we turn these vehicles into selling, we're making profits on selling the vehicles, which in turn goes to our overhead on releasing the vehicles, um, in the future. So it's really a, a win situation, and we've, I've really done the homework on this, and I have not gotten any negative feedback from anybody on this. Um, it's, it's pretty unique, uh, situation, and this is something that's not new. It's been going on for quite a few years now with them doing this, and they don't do it just, you know, it's, uh, ju- not just for police, police, fire, DPW, water department, everything across the board. So with that, um, I'm gonna bring up the experts, and they can answer questions for you a lot better than I can. Uh, but, uh, they'll be able to go down what I, the documentation that I've given you and give you an idea of exactly what we're talking about here.
So, Chief, before you step away, you're talking about increasing your fleet to keep the miles down.
Correct.
So that you're flipping them at forty thousand miles for maybe three or four years instead.
Correct.
But then now we're gonna also have, um, to outfit an additional.
Well, we already have that many vehicles as we go right now, okay? Um, and what we do right now is we take these vehicles, after we drive them for a first year or two years, we put them back to a secondary vehicle, which means we keep them even longer at that point, so it reduces what the revenue is on them once we finally do turn them in. The problem is when we actually do turn these things in to sell them, eh, when you get behind the wheel of them, you'll know what I'm talking about. Um, we put a.
So we don't necessarily have a whole lot of outfitting costs.
Well, we do all the outfit, our, outfitting ourselves. So as far as any labor like that goes, that's, that's on us.
It, it'll be a little initial cost.
Little initial cost, but then from that.
It's not like we have to buy for three cars to, to get them outfitted.
No, we're gonna be using the majority of the equipment that we have right now. Yes, will we have to buy some additional equipment to outfit these vehicles? Yes, but what I'm looking at from there, and, um, I'll talk about that as well, is they have also stepped up and said the current vehicles that we have right now, and the vehicles I was getting ready to go to auction, which have not been able to go to auction because of COVID, they will take care of that end of it for us too, and put that out through their, um, their fleet service and sell those vehicles for us as well. Uh, which the return that they get is way better than we're gonna be able to get, because they're hitting such a, uh, they're hitting national scale, where we'd be hitting a local scale.
I just wanna know going in if it was gonna be a big cost, that's all, for outfitting.
No, cuz I, I actually, I think, uh, once it's said and done with what we're gonna sell these vehicles for that we have right now, that's gonna more, more than cover the cost of that and cover a good portion of our first year's lease on these vehicles. So.
Hi, guys.
Hi.
Hi, my name's Steve Conley. I work with Enterprise, so.
Good seeing you in person.
I know, it's good seeing you too. I love the Saman shirt.
Yeah.
It really sets the tone for the entire meeting. I love it. Very cool. Matches the, uh, Clay Township background and everything.
I, I did that on purpose.
Yup, really, it just, you get, the whole thing works, what, what you got going on. No, I'm just kidding. Uh, so, we have been doing government business. Enterprise Fleet Management has actually been in business since nineteen fifty-seven, and we were traditionally in the commercial realm, which is construction companies, um, sales fleets, stuff like that. We got into the government space about twelve or fifteen years ago, and then here in Michigan, it was more towards the twelve years ago. We, we kinda tailed towards the end of it and let everyone else sample it out. What we found is that everyone is kind of using the same playbook. You take your capital budget, you buy a few vehicles, you hold them till the wheels fall off. You don't get too much when you get rid of them, right? Now, what Enterprise Rent-A-Car does is the opposite of that. We buy a ton of vehicles, and we flip them out really frequently, but because we buy so many, we get a really good price, right? Well, you guys are a government entity, so you get a better price than we get, and you drive less miles than we do. So our model as a rental car industry of buying at a great price, selling at a really great time, and not paying any operating expenses, works really well for your guys' model, right? It's just a different way of looking at it. So we're taking your exact same budget that you use today, we're enforcing our model, and instead of paying cash for your cars, we're financing them. The reason why we're doing that is because you're getting such a return on the back end, that it doesn't make sense to pay forty thousand dollars for a pickup truck that in two years is gonna sell for forty thousand dollars. Why don't you just finance it, give me less money, and then I'll give it all right back to you at the end? So we do that, we eliminate, well, we don't eliminate, but we really shrink your operating budget when it comes to maintenance and fuel. And then all the while, we're moving the depreciation pie to shrink your overall budget. Now, what you have in front of you is a model of what it would look like over the next ten years. And I don't wanna bore you too much, but I'll give you a little bit of insight of what this is. So if you look at the gold bar that says average, that's what you guys are doing today, okay? That box all the way at the top, that is the assumptions in which the analysis is built off of. That box all the way at the top, that is the assumptions in which the analysis is built off of, which is your guys' actual vehicle spend in your budget today. So let's look at this average bar or what you're spending today. So in this analysis, you have 18 vehicles, and on average, you guys buy two and a half a year. See where it says annual needs, two and a half? So that means that you sell two and a half a year and you keep 18 vehicles in fleet. Now, you don't currently lease any, so under the lease category, it says zero. And your average purchase budget for two and a half vehicles is $96,000. So that's where we are there. Because there's no lease budget, that is a zero. And you guys really don't get too much money when you resell these things because you drive the wheels off of them, okay? So your maintenance budget today is right around $25,000. And now what we're finding is that is drastically up and to the right because vehicles are breaking down more frequently, they're very expensive to maintain, and you can do a lot less work internally, so you're outsourcing. And then you have to take it to a dealership because all these things are have computers. So that number is going up. Your fuel budget is around $57,000. So your all-in fleet budget when it comes to purchasing, maintenance, and fuel is $179,000. Now, we say, okay, if we were to take this budgeting model or this leasing model, financing model, what would that look like over a 10-year span? So let's just go over the first line. So the line right under that, in 2021, you guys would still have 18 vehicles in fleet. But what we say is, instead of getting two and a half cars, let's rotate eight vehicles, right? So now you're gonna have eight under a finance model and 10 that you currently own. So we're going to sell those eight vehicles. You are going to lease eight from us. And as you can see, your purchase budget is zero, but your lease budget is $70,000. So without us, remember, you bought two and a half for $96,000. With us, you're leasing eight vehicles for $70,000. Now, what we're gonna do is we're gonna take those vehicles and we're going to resell them. So we put values on what they're worth, and that's at $78,000. So we took what you already own, your assets that you own, resold them, and we lease you eight new ones. Your equity leased, all that means is we can flip vehicles within one year. F-150s, Silverado 1500s, we can actually turn in one year and turn a little bit of a profit for you. So you get money back in your budget that way, and then your maintenance budget is gonna fall by about $4,000. That also drops your fuel budget because your oldest vehicles in the fleet are going out. So your all-in fleet budget in the first year is $59,000. Again, today without us, you are spending $179,000 in your fleet budget. In the first year with us, we're flipping close to half of your fleet and you're spending $59,000. So you're at a net savings of $119,000 in your first year. Now, as you go down the lines, you'll see the exact same model and what it looks like as we flip out of your entire fleet. And everything comes under the financing model. What you'll find at the very bottom is that you're saving $403,000 across a fleet of 18 vehicles after 10 years. Now, that is not the entire picture, and this isn't all financial, right? What does it really mean for the township? What does it mean for your officers to be in newer vehicles, safer vehicles on the road? Your, if you get down waterline or something for DPW, they're out there in a reliable car that's safer, that's always on the road. The image for the citizens of the township, always having newer police vehicles and DPW vehicles that are out there as well. And then, of course, the safety for your guys' employees is obviously optimal as well. So does it make sense financially? Absolutely it does. But even more so, to tag onto that, it makes a great difference from a safety aspect for your citizens as well as your employees. So I know I said I'd keep it short, I did it as short as I could. What questions do you guys have?
I had a couple Zoom meetings. I had the advantage of that. And when I initially saw it, it basically, you know, we get a great price. We all know that through the state bid process on these cars. And they can sell them use a lot better than we can. They have the way to do that.
Correct.
And that's where we make our money, is when we actually sell it. And they watch the market, and you're gonna tell us when the best time to sell them.
That's correct.
Is. And so I just put rough numbers together without even looking at his. I estimate we're gonna save money our year one. Year two will be break-even, it might even cost us a little bit because we gotta pay the lease. But we're not buying two new cars on year two, what we do every year. And maybe a truck, I'm not, you know, with a DPW. But year three and on, when we start selling them, that's when we're gonna start realizing some...
Major savings.
Cash flow savings. And I did talk to the DPW in Harrison Township with John. They love it. You're in Chesterfield too.
That's correct.
We got good feedback from Chesterfield and whoever that we've talked to that's doing this program.
How long have they been doing it in Harrison and Chesterfield?
How long?
Harrison Township has been through two vehicle cycles so far. Chesterfield is newer. Across the state, we're in 47 different counties, cities, municipalities. If you look at, like, City Detroit is one of our oldest customers. We just got another bid through, for 300 vehicles through them this year. They've been a customer for 12 years. City of East Point is a longstanding customer. City of Fraser is a longstanding customer. Clausen, like I said, we have quite a few.
What would have to happen in the market to screw this plan, this model up?
Well, that's the great part about it is that these are financed. So if you needed to keep them longer, you're just paying down what you owe on them at any point in time. So the market isn't going to change where you're at a disadvantage. A vehicle that me or you would get personally at a dealership for $40,000, you guys can go out and buy in the ideal price for $28,000.
Right.
So what's happening is you guys can keep them for 12 or 24 months. We go out and finance something that's $28,000. And then when we sell it, we sell it for $36,000 or $37,000. So you're making back all of your payments and then some to help reduce future costs. All the while, shortening your vehicle life cycle and minimizing your operating expenses.
And the best thing there is, that profits from that are our profits.
Yeah, that's your money.
They're doing work for us. We are reaping benefit from it. And it doesn't take us having to do all that legwork to go out there and work with an auction company or someone like that in order to get rid of these vehicles, which is a lot of work too.
So how many miles do you drive?
No, no, there's not.
When we had our Zoom meeting, one of the potential hangups was how long it was gonna take us to get you cars. And I think you guys were checking around, looking into that to see if that was really gonna potentially be an issue.
Well, the problem that I'm finding right now, it doesn't matter who we go with right now, that's gonna be the case.
We get cars just as fast as Gornow or any other dealership. It's just the manufacturers are at a different point. Correct.
Whether I order them where we normally order them or not, they're telling me the same timeframe.
So we're really gonna run the tires off these cars?
Yep. Well, the good thing is, right now, is like you say, we have vehicles that we wanted to sell last year, but we couldn't because of COVID.
Those Chargers will get some money.
Those Chargers are worth a pretty penny, correct?
Yeah, the Chargers, they'll get good money.
How come there's only one of the Chargers on here?
The Chargers were added to the list after this analysis was done.
Another analysis was now because John changed a few things up after we sat down with him this last week. And we figured out, okay, just where the market is right now and the vehicles, we're better off with some of our vehicles, getting rid of them now. After speaking with them, we're gonna make a way better return on them by doing it now, whereas more cost prohibitive to add that vehicle now than wait another year on it. John found that, I think, with two other vehicles. Once we actually fully understood where they were going with this and we had given them the initial breakdown of what we had.
The wire department has a 17 and an 18 truck that we probably turned over to them and we'd make $3,000, $4,000, actually make money.
And that's what we're looking at.
After we, after we used it for four or five years, we're still making money.
Our pickup's a 2016. Now, like I said, you had Harrison who just sold a 2015 and made him $3,000 over what they paid for. We've got a 2016 with 40,000 miles on it over there. So that's why I looked at and went, okay, then I anticipate to be able to do the same with that. If I replace that with a new vehicle in its place, plus I'm making that money back on that vehicle while I can.
Is it just the interceptors that are hard to get a hold of, or trucks in general?
So there's an international microchip shortage right now that has prohibited not only the vehicles, but of course, PlayStation 5s and a ton of stuff. So they're working through it and we're towards the end of this shortage. It was caused by the COVID and the manufacturers didn't think they were gonna need as many vehicles as they do. But there is a constraint on vehicle availability, which is pushing out timelines. I mean, it'll be over by this time next year, but this is just the marketplace that we're working in.
If you go to some of these places and you look at, for, like Ford, for example, I've seen some of their lots, and you would not believe the thousands of trucks that are just parked there that they can't do anything with because no chips. And talking with them at the dealership, they told me they're expecting a few months, probably about three more months before everything starts getting back into motion with them. But, and that's what I'm looking at is, we are gonna have to make sure that we get something in place as soon as we can. And we're still talking first of the year in February before we can get anything.
So are you looking for the board to approve this, just so you could get the wheels in motion and hope they show up in February?
Well, regardless, I've gotta do something. We, you know, we budgeted for two vehicles, which we do every year. And with this, the estimates that they're giving us, I can replace these two vehicles with six vehicles for less than what I'm paying for these two vehicles. And then have the capital from the vehicles that we're gonna sell right now. So what I'm looking at is, one, be able to outfit these other vehicles, no problem, and still put money from that forward towards our lease payments on these vehicles. So like I said, right now, we're paying that each year as we go. And like you said, we're driving the wheels off these things, so when we go to get rid of them, we're not getting near the return on these vehicles. And we're driving vehicles that are breaking down all the time, costing us more money.
How long is the proposed contract for?
What's that?
You can get out whenever you want. There is no, there is no contract.
No contract?
If it, well, there's a lease agreement, but it's not time-abiding. Each individual vehicle is its own finance agreement. So we give you the terms upfront. Hey, you're gonna keep this Ford Police Interceptor for four years. If you're 12 months into it and you hate the program, you can either pay it all the way off and take title to it when you're done, or you can check for what you want it and cut ties. It's up to you.
Well, it's, you know, it's economic driven. So new vehicles are at an all-time shortage, which places a premium on used vehicles.
Correct.
We all know, the common sense is that used vehicles have never been this high historically. They're crazy high.
Yep.
It's only gonna be a matter of time before the market gets flooded with new vehicles and new vehicle incentives. So I just want to make sure...
Well, that's where it comes into play, what we pay for these vehicles.
Yeah.
Because we're paying so much less than what the average person's gonna pay. And that's why right now, yes, we're gonna, that's why I said, I regret, now would be the time for us to get rid of other vehicles I normally wouldn't.
Yep.
Because of the return that we've got on them now.
Yep.
Opposed to down the road, we're still gonna be sitting in the window to where we're doing good on our vehicles. It might not be as much as we're gonna get now, but with what we pay for these vehicles, we're not gonna get hurt on them. And that's what the other municipalities are telling me that have been with this, you know, a lengthier amount of time. So right now, we know we're in that unique position to where we can sell these vehicles at a higher price. And that's why both John, George, and I looked at and went, okay, well, this changes things up in how we would really do things. Because just for that reason, the return that we're gonna get back on them right now, if we weren't gonna get that return, would stretch them out a little further. But now, let's get the money out of them while we can. Puts us into a newer fleet. And I mean, really, I have not found any, anything wrong with this to this point. I have not heard anything negative come in on this yet.
As long as you think we can, we can hold our head above water when the market gets saturated. And if not, it doesn't really, it's not much of a risk.
Right.
Right? You're not signing a long-term contract, short-term lease, so...
For what we do, I think there'd be more of a risk there.
Yeah.
But with the reduced rate of what we get these vehicles for, it almost, I mean, it's weird.
Right, but it does fluctuate our, our net cash, right? In the 10-year savings, you know, it, could we potentially receive 100 or 403? Yeah, yes. We could potentially see that. Is that realistic? I guess if you had a crystal ball, right?
Yeah, I guess I'll look at it, Chris.
Yes, it's realistic.
Let's say that we kept these vehicles the entire lease, paid them off, and we didn't get anything for them at the end.
We're not...
I'm still paying $80,000, $90,000 a year for two vehicles.
Yeah.
I'm leasing six of them for less than that.
Yeah, and we have a newer fleet. Yeah, that part all makes sense.
Either, either way, I'm still in the black.
There's no mileage limit. Like, that's where you usually get in trouble on leases, is you go over your miles and then you have to pay.
And that's where they work with us to monitor where we're sitting as far as our mileage and that. And that's where their experts, they do this every day, look at and say, okay, give us heads up, this is your optimum time to sell.
They'll look at our mileage, the market. Tell us when to sell.
It might not be the most optimum time for us, and we understand that, okay? But we gotta do what's gonna be fiscally responsible as far as for the township and the agency. So, you know, we're willing to put the hard work into doing what we gotta do to outfit these vehicles. So, and I look at, keep my guys in safer vehicles too. I mean, that's...
Yeah, I love that option.
Mike, how long does it take you to outfit a vehicle?
It, Joanna, really depends. I mean, right now, they haven't changed anything up in these vehicles, so it's a lot quicker. We have, we've got everything set up now to where we can remove things and pop them back in pretty quick because one vehicle is uniform to the next. So I would say within about four days, we can have one done. I'm gonna actually beef the guys up a little bit in doing this. So I think it'll be quicker than that. But it takes us a little bit of time, but you know what? I can take care of that in scheduling. I'll figure that out. Our guys are gonna be working regardless, and our guys don't mind doing it. And whether they're working on a car or on the road for the day, they're gonna be getting the same pay, so. And our guys are fantastic about that. Because you know what involves them to go in there and tweak that vehicle a little bit too, to their liking, and so it's a win-win.
Thank you.
I just remember the time, I don't know, it was like five years ago, it was, we had three accidents, remember, the same day? Vehicle accidents. We're like, let's shut up, sit down and go home, you know, before noon.
And really, when they brought this up to us, yes.
Yeah, but we had a police cruiser, had to do a head-on on the tight road. I think, yeah, I mean, everyone was relatively okay.
Yep.
And they totaled it. And this is after we drove it two years. We actually made money on the insurance. So they gave us a check for more than what we paid for it. I'm like, wow.
This would've been four years ago?
Yeah, about four years ago.
Four or five years ago.
Yeah, right then I thought, man, there's gotta be a better way to do it, but I don't know the industry.
I support, the first things I ask, I go, is it legal for us to be doing this?
Yeah.
I said, no, everybody's been doing this for quite some time, so it definitely works out in our favor.
What do we need to do to move forward with this if we so do choose to?
It's pretty simple. We, you guys vote that you're interested in advancing the process, and then we can get our master contracts over to your attorney for review. If there's no provisions that they need to make, then we execute the agreements and we can move forward with vehicle purchases and place orders with the manufacturer. Same as you would do with the dealership.
Right.
We go out, get your incentives from the manufacturer because you're a government entity. We put it on a finance agreement, and then we can execute it and wait for them to get here.
So I guess what I'm looking for is the permission from the board to push forward to get this ball rolling. And then once they got this put together, I'll bring this back to the board for your final approval and go from there. But I'm hoping to get it done as soon as possible because we've gotta get the order in.
You don't want Ford to say, we're done making Ford Police Interceptors, we'll start again in eight months. And now we have to wait eight months in order to get them done.
We dealt with that already once.
Correct.
Now, Mike, you, this isn't just police department, this is fire department, DPW.
They need to look at our township cars too.
And matter of fact, they had told me today, I said, boy, I wish I would've known this before, you know, we bought the other vehicles. And then looking at what we just bought, they said, next year, the smartest thing we could do is get rid of them, make the money on them, make more than what we paid for them once again, and then go into a lease program with them as well.
Replace with the exact same vehicle, but basically what you're doing is you're cashing out of a $40,000 asset and then you're giving me... and then you're giving me $5,000 for the year to drive it, right? And then when you sell it, you can sell it for more than you bought it for in the first place, so.
Which would hold true for.
Correct.
The township's vehicles as well.
We have to paint them all, paint them all our color.
Nope.
No, we just order it that way from the manufacturer. We get the, you get to build them specifically. Each department will be able to pick what they want for as far as a color standpoint, and then all the interior features as well. Cab configuration, everything.
I mean, some of the things we'll be responsible for, which is graphics and that, which we are regardless on vehicles, that's really the only thing that I farm out. We used to do it, you know, I used to strike them all ourselves, but the company that we're using now, the, the price they charge is not worth me even doing it now.
Yep.
So we actually, one of the first things I'll do is send them out, have the vehicle graphics done on them, and on the vehicles we're not working on as we get them, then we start outfitting them, so that part's done, so it works pretty seamless.
There's no issue when we turn these back in and you guys peel the decals off and the ghostings on the door and?
Nope. So typically what happens is there's not ghosting on the door because of how quick we're turning them over for you. So the ghosting happens after seven, eight, nine, 10 years, stuff like that, but we still sell them all the time that way. The majority of our clients are actually, like I said, commercial clients, Barton Mallow, John Green, Wallbridge. They beat these things up pretty good, and we can get them at a premium.
There's no issue as far as drilling holes or anything like that that we have to do, that's, there's no issues there.
That being said, I'll make a, a motion that we, uh, pursue the enterprise lease vehicle operation. I support.
A motion and support?
For the entire fleet of Clay Township?
Well, he's going to, he's gonna bring a proposal forward. We'll vote on with the contract.
I follow you. We have motion and support.
Yep. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out, guys.
Absolutely.
All right, uh, please, uh, oh, we got a new hire.
I'm gonna let these guys get out of here.
Yep.
Full time.
Huh?
Would you like to drop down to HC and come back to AB?
Aye, son.
Uh, no, we're, we're.
And just so you guys know, yeah, this isn't something we just started on myself, George, already, well, you guys were in the Zoom meetings with us. We've been working on this for a while now, so.
Yeah.
We're finally there. But with this one, um, I'd like to introduce you to Don Seidel. Don is, uh, recently retired from Warren Police Department, retired out as a road patrol sergeant. Uh, comes with a lot of years of experience and a lot of knowledge, um, lot of great training and background. Um, everything that we've seen so far has been exemplary with him. So, um, we're scooping him up before he can go anywhere else. And, uh, we, uh, we put stipulations on him and that and threaten him a little bit, but nothing that would get us in trouble. But, um, we're very fortunate to be bringing someone of his caliber in. Um, very nice to, uh, add to some of our, you know, our younger officers that we brought in. I think he's gonna be a, a, a very big wealth of knowledge as far as helping them and working with them out on the road. Gives, definitely, you know, as far as we go, gives us a little more sense of peace when we go home at night.
Yeah, a little more experience on the road.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Priceless.
How you doing, Don?
Very well, sir.
Good, good. Where do you live?
I live in, uh, Clayton Township.
Okay. You wanna ask you a question?
Is it, uh, is it Donald, is it Seidel or Seidel?
It's Seidel.
Seidel.
I was gonna guess Seidel.
It's German, so the I and the E are backwards from what everybody thinks.
Okay. When did you, uh, when did you finish up for, uh, with Warren?
My last official day was June 2nd.
Oh, relatively recent.
Wow.
And we weren't waiting.
Don't you wanna take a little break?
Scoop.
So. So we are in the midst right now of, um, finishing, uh, our background. Uh, we've only got one step that we've gotta do, and I, I don't see any issues there whatsoever. Um, then I'm, I'm hoping the board will approve Don coming on board. And once we're finished there, I'm thinking right around mid-month, Don will come in and, and start training, um, show him the way we do things and how, you know, the, uh, different attributes here at Clay Township.
Are you familiar with the, with the area?
A little bit, yes. Uh, we, I, I know Kate Burley.
Oh.
So.
We're not gonna hold that.
No way.
So, you know, um, way back when, I guess, uh, about, um, ninety-five, ninety-six, I dated, um, a female who parents lived on Harson's Island, uh, Mike Canal. Uh, he, um, was a Detroit police officer. He lived up in Augenak. So we used to fish right off the Augenak, uh, pier, you know, and even though we were going for walleye, we were always catching sturgeon. So, so throwing those back.
Good. Ford, I'll make a motion to approve the Clay Township Police Department hiring of Don Seidel as a full-time police officer for Clay PD.
I'll support.
A motion and all kinds of support. Any more discussions or questions? We got Don on the hot seat. You know how to swim?
Yes.
All right.
I'm a, I'm a certified scuba diver also.
Oh, awesome. Me too. All right, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Congratulations and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Sorry to make you sit here in that hot suit with no air.
Yeah, really. And I will let you know, Don was a firefighter and paramedic before this.
Oh, really?
We're not holding it against.
So he gave up hoses for guns?
Well, actually, I was a police officer, then I went to the fire department, then I went back.
Oh, okay.
Both my dad and my grandfather were retired firefighters.
Okay. All right, well, good.
Nice to meet you.
George, what do you think?
Yeah.
All right, uh, next thing on the agenda, we have code enforcement litigation. And, uh, I mentioned it to a couple times before. You know, we, 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 we go forward, uh, and we have to do it in the Circuit Court with these issues. Right now, we have two pending. Uh, we wanna initiate, uh, a case through, uh, for our Suleers on Field Road. Uh, the brother of our old Suleer that was on the corner.
Mm-hmm.
A lot of the stuff got moved, so it's basically the same stuff, different property. And then we have another one, uh, on Stark, uh, Road, and, um.
And then we have a lot more we haven't gotten to yet.
We have a lot, lot more, believe me. And, uh, we also ironed down the process as far as dangerous buildings, uh, with our new attorney and, uh, you know, we wanna start getting more aggressive with that. Uh, and, and, uh, we're, we're shrinking the, the process before we go to court, the, the timeframe quite a bit. Um, but it's typical that to initiate a court case in Circuit Court, typically, like if we're gonna go sue somebody, you know, it would take board action. But, uh, we thought, you know, do, do you really want us to bring every light case and everything that we're going to pursue before the board and, and make it a, a political question? Um.
I'd rather hang it on Artie.
Yeah, hang it on me.
Yeah.
Um, because they all come to me whether I like it or not.
But you're still gonna let everyone know.
Yeah, we're gonna, we'll let everybody know and, uh.
How does that process look?
And, and before, before it hits this point, the, the building inspector and zoning, both of them have signed off on it.
Yeah.
So we have the zoning code enforcer and the building official saying, yeah, this is an issue. We need to go forward. Um, they would turn it all over to the, our, our attorney, and, uh, our attorney would say, yeah, I agree, uh, let's go forward with it. Here is the letter I want to send saying that we're going, if the attorney says, uh, if they don't, uh, follow the process, we're gonna take them to Circuit Court. Mister Supervisor, is this okay if I send this letter out to this person? And I would say yea or nay. I'd probably say yea. Um, but most, I mean, all, everyone, I, I do a couple of drive-bys before it gets to that point too. Um, it's just, uh, uh, trying to, to spe- to speed it up and, and, and keep things moving. Um, I mean, every day, I'm driving by, by properties and, and looking at them, uh, you know, for high grass or this or that. Sometimes they're not legit, and sometimes they are. Um, so.
Don't you already have the authority to do that though?
No.
Oh, no?
Well, not, not officially.
I thought.
We, we just been doing.
With this board, she just wants it in the minutes.
Yeah.
I thought it was already like part of your duties to, because first they get, first they get fined, right?
No.
No, or they get, they get told to fix it first, right?
Right.
And so how many times does that happen? Like, they get two warnings and then you take them to court?
Yep, and, but on some of them, we, we're speeding it up, like Suleer. We know from past experience, we're gonna have to take them to court. So we're, 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 we shot them a couple of letters, look, you gotta deal with this. We know they're not gonna. And we're, we're gonna take them to court.
So, I mean, but right now, you have to ask us on every one of those?
Technically, yeah. I mean, the attorney would like it to be clarified, uh, to protect me and the board and herself. Um, typically, if the township is going to ta- take somebody in Circuit Court, um, it would need the whole board approval. Um, we're, we're looking for, uh, building code enforcement to bypass that and let the supervisor, uh, do it along with the building official and, um, code enforcer.
So the actual documentation, um, come from your email to Township Attorney?
Yes.
And given the case, I, I don't wanna slow you down. I wanna support this. Would it be reasonable to request that the board was maybe CC'd on the email?
Sure, we could do that.
I mean, would that be like a bunch of extra stuff for you?
No, that's fine.
You have a, the whole board in the one swoop, don't you?
Yep. No, that's fine.
I could support that.
Me too. I thought you were already authorized, so.
Yeah, no, I mean, this.
I wanna keep it speedy.
Kinda clears it up. We, 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 we've been doing it this way, but we wanted to make it more official and, uh, um, just to, to make, make it happen faster. And I'll be perfect, perfectly honest with you, I, there's a lot of dangerous buildings that we're gonna be going after. Um, we have a big one in North Clay. It was an old restaurant that really needs to come down or be fixed.
Was there a motion?
Not yet.
Not yet?
I'm queued.
Um. And, uh, in fact, I've, I got a phone call into the owner of the property to see what his intentions are with it. Um, but, uh, yeah.
Ford, I'll make a motion to support the authorization of the supervisor to initiate litigation for code enforcement issues on behalf of the board, in which he's agreed to CC us on a documentation to the attorney.
Support.
Can I say initial documentation?
Yes, yeah.
I don't, I don't want all of it.
No.
I just wanna know when it gets fired.
The initiating.
Initiating document.
Yep.
Is that cleared off?
Yes.
Basically, I'll copy you the letter that.
That you're sending to.
That we're sending to them.
Right?
Yep.
Perfect. And then we'll give you a pat on the back and wish you luck.
That's right. And this, I, I, I think that's a good idea because it keeps you in loop. If someone says, hey, what are you doing about this? And you can say, hey, it's already in the, in the works. Because, you know, a Circuit Court nowadays, it takes a while to.
Right.
Okay, we have motion. Do we have support?
Yes.
Any more discussion?
No, there should, should be a roll call.
Yeah, I think, I was just gonna do that. Uh, hearing none, roll call, please.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Kristy Hillgan?
Yes.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Hey, motion passed. Next is to approve our Parks and Rec millage distribution. Uh, came out this year of forty-four thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars.
So this is our opportunity to request reimbursement for the tax that we collect in the winter for St. Clair County Parks. This is twenty-five percent of what we, um, collected and dispersed to them. So forty-four thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars. So I will make a motion that we approve the 2021 request for millage distribution for St. Clair County Parks and Rec for forty-four thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars.
Support.
Okay, a motion of support. Did they change the way they figured this? I don't think they did.
Nope, I don't believe so.
I always had an issue because what they do, they give twenty-five percent of all the homesteaded properties. We have a large amount of non-homestead properties where we don't get a nickel. And I brought this to their attention several times, and they, they said, yep. And do not change it.
And was it, huh?
Yeah, because we'd be getting about twenty-five more thousand.
Yeah, which makes up for some of the loss in commercial revenue.
But that's not gonna happen.
But it makes, it would make sense because the people who are homestead are using the park, and the people who are non-homestead are using the park.
Right. I, I fought that, that, uh, battle several times and, and lost every time, so.
Let's put Sherry on it.
Yeah. I, uh, I, I, I make that abundantly clear to them, but we, we are have, we do have a new, uh, director of St. Clair County Parks and Rec who I'll get her down sometime this summer for one of our meetings. I've had conversations with her. So do we have a motion yet?
Yes, and support.
And support. Uh, any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Kristy Hillgan?
Yes.
Crystal Regan? Cindy Valentine, yes. Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Hey, motion passes. Next, we have a request from our city of Elginak for the water plant on, um, a strainer. I did talk to them and say, hey, you only got one quote for the actual strainer, and I appreciate you got two quotes for the installation. And they said that the strainer, verbally they told me, is, uh, this is the only supplier for this, this particular strainer. So they're locked in.
I, I kinda got excited when I saw Mike was here because I thought he was here representing Elginak.
Yeah.
For this portion of their.
Right.
I guess not.
No.
Eh.
Eh, and, uh, but I.
So we have a Purvis and Foster bid and one from Platinum Mechanical?
Yes. And they asked to bring in a temporary hoist, uh, where this goes and hoist it up and set it in. Um, because I thought, yeah, you know, we got the, the big part for thirty-nine thousand. We only have one, one quote for it, but there's nobody else that can quote this, which I don't know. I find that hard to believe, but.
We all see it.
Yeah.
Um, did John DeBoyer have any recommendation for this?
Uh, he's, yeah, he, he saw it and, uh, he says, yeah, I, I guess. I don't know. He, this was kinda out of his expertise too.
He also expressed displeasure in the single bid.
Yeah, he did.
Yeah, he's not happy about that.
No.
So I think as a group, we need to make sure that, um, when Elginak is operating either the waste, the, the water treatment plant, that they, they do so with the same mannerisms and processes that we have.
Like I say, when I first received this, I ca- I called, uh, called them up, hey, we need a second bid. And they said, there's nobody else to bid on it.
That was one of my questions.
Yep.
John DeBoyer.
Oh, yeah. So our share would be sixty-two, I can't remember, sixty-two or sixty-two point five?
Sixty-two point five.
Yes, point five, sixty-two point five percent.
Of the forty-nine?
Of the forty-nine. So, with the board's pleasure.
Thirty thousand, seven sixteen.
Yeah, and it, it, it is, um, in their capital replacement plan, and it was budgeted, so I, I, I was.
Oh, so we didn't know that this was coming?
Yes.
Ford, I'll make a motion to approve the request for the water treatment plant improvements set forth before us in the amount of thirty thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any more discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Crystal Reagan?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Kristy Hilton?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, next we have our resolution to set sewer rates for twenty-one, twenty-two. I don't know the real particulars, but I know we are lowering the price per gallon, but upping the, um, the base charge. Ultimately, it would probably be a sewer increase for most people, I believe, but, um, and we only did it one year because we are in the midst of our Sog grant, and part of that will be, uh, a very detailed, um, rate analysis going forward.
Board, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two-one dash eighteen to adjust sewer rates from July first of twenty-twenty-one through June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-two. The sewer minimum rate charge will be seventy-three sixty per quarter, and the sewer usage fee will be three dollars and sixty-eight cents per one thousand gallons.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any, uh, discussion on that?
How much is it now? How much is it going up?
Uh, I don't know the particulars. Do you?
It's sixty-one twenty. The base is sixty-one twenty. And the per ga- per thousand gallons is three eighty.
So if you're a big user, it's gonna go down, but if you're not a big user, it, it's gonna go.
The base covers the first twenty-eight thousand gallons.
Right. So if you use over twenty-eight thousand gallons and.
Then the usage kicks in.
Right.
Ten bucks a quarter.
As for a three-month period. So.
I support.
You support our infrastructure.
You already made the motion, didn't you?
You support improving our infrastructure.
That's, that's a good thing.
Me too.
Sewer is, uh.
Ten bucks.
Yes, sewer is, is, is challenging right now, so. All right, any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Kristy Hilton?
Yes.
Crystal Reagan?
Yes. Man.
We're all yes.
It's getting hot in here.
It's so hot.
We're getting slapped there.
Yeah, it's getting hot in here. We're getting here.
It's, it's hotter outside, I think, than it was in here.
Is it really?
I think so.
It's getting hot in here.
Oh, that's not.
Let's not go there.
That's enough.
All right, uh, next is, uh, Resolution twenty-two-one seventeen, set our annual budget. We had a public hearing, and, uh, before you is the, uh, resolution to set our annual budget with all the budgets, uh, included. It's twelve million, seven hundred and seventy-four thousand one hundred and eighty-six dollars and ninety-one cents.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two-one dash seventeen, setting the annual budget for twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two. For, I can't see that for.
Twelve thousand?
Twelve million, seven hundred and seventy-four thousand one hundred and eighty-six dollars and ninety-one cents.
Support.
Okay, a motion and support. We had lots of talks and hammered it out pretty good, and, uh, in this is our American, I got a separate fund, American rebuilding plan, because rumor has it, we're gonna get eight hundred thousand, but we don't know the number and how we can spend it, but I stuck it in our budget just to CYA. So, any discussion, we have support, yeah, we do. Any, any discussion? Roll call.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Joanne Shirkey?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Kristy Hilton?
Yes.
Crystal Reagan?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
All right, next I'm recommending that the board appoint Joe Bozy to our zoning board of appeals as, as an alternate. He's a retired, uh, engineering vehicle, or, um, manufacturing engineer from a vehicle assembly from GM. He was, I believe, a quality control guy. He's retired for thirty, he worked there for thirty years. He holds a bachelor of science in mechanical engineering from Lawrence Tech, and he now lives on Harson's Island. He was at one of our zoning board of appeals and thought to be very interested in it and would like to serve and help our, uh, our community going forward. Joanne, you know him, you talked to him.
Yes, talked to him. It's very, yes. I'll make the motion that we, um, recommend, uh, Joe Bozy to be on the zone, to be appointed as an alternative to the, uh, alternate on the zoning board of appeals, which I think he'll be very good.
I know Debbie Addy's talked to him, a few others, so. Here we have a motion.
Support.
And support. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of appointing Joe Bozy as an alternate member of the ZBA? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. All right. Cindy, you got any?
Um, I'll be calling to have the air checked out tomorrow.
Yes, thank you.
Um, and just welcoming Officer Seidel?
Seidel.
Seidel.
Seidel?
Yep.
Hello?
I'm gonna have to re spell his name, so he, it looks like it sounds. Um, that's it? It's a late one tonight.
Okay. All right, Chris, we'll just go right. Yeah, I'll be quick. Congratulations to the Elginak Boys Baseball Team, the Girls Softball Team. They were in district play this weekend. Probably had, I don't know, I would guess, seven, eight, nine hundred people there at the, at the fields this weekend. Very exciting. They both made it to the championship games. Unfortunately, they fell a little short, but what a great weekend to, to finish up their season.
They won their first game, didn't they?
Oh, yeah, they both did.
Yeah.
Yeah, they lost in the championship. Yeah, both of them, by a couple of runs. It was great, great baseball and softball. Uh, couple of quick shout-outs, and I'll be quick. Um, Mark with the Water Department. So I attended a funeral, um, last week. And, and, you know, I'm, I'm dressed up and I got my glasses. He doesn't know who I am. And, and I'm watching him go through the burial service. And, and after the service is over, there, there comes a time where people stick around and they watch the actual casket being lowered down. It's kind of a final closure. Well, he went above and beyond, and, and he really helped out, right? He was professional, he was polite. And I just, I like people who are good at their job, and that day he was particularly good at his job. Also, last one is Officer Vantiam. Um, he had to go and take care of a, uh, a small dog that was starting to become a relative nuisance, um, around my neighborhood, only to the fact that the poor thing was gonna get smoked by a car. He's walking up and down the street, it's a forty, forty-five mile an hour zone. And I conversed with him on several occasions, and he was polite, professional, you know.
Talking about the dog, or the?
I'm talking about the officer.
Okay.
Who took a situation where it could have been, he, he could have took it a different way, okay? And he, and he didn't. He didn't. He, he was very patient and just took care of business. So, uh, kudos to your officer, chief. That's it.
Thank you.
I have great news.
Yay.
Twenty-twenty-one summer tax bills will be going out at the end of June. They're payable beginning July first and due September fourteenth.
I'm sorry, they're going out when?
Anyone that's looking forward to that in the mail.
Chrissy, uh, we always say good things, and she goes, you gotta pay your taxes.
Yeah. They're going out the end of June?
End of June.
End of June.
That's important for me.
Yeah. Okay, Maureen?
Um, just excited about the lease opportunity and for looking into that, chief, and the fire truck's looking great. Did you guys get this letter? I didn't know if anybody had any ideas on this or comments.
I, I did. I, I responded to them. Thank you for the information. It really wasn't any new information that I didn't know.
Okay.
Um, uh, it was, I think, more for them, maybe?
About Hyda, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, I was just curious about that.
Right.
All good?
Okay. Joanne?
Well, I'd like to say welcome to Don Seidel, and, uh, glad to see Joe Bozy get onto the ZBA because that's a, a tough board to be on.
Yeah.
And, uh, glad to see the new fire truck right on the front end that says Harson's Island.
That's awesome.
I was excited to find out you used to drive one. Oh, yeah. That's awesome. I was the assistant chief.
Yep. Joanne was the assistant chief.
On the island, yeah. So I know a little bit about that. It's changed a big deal, though.
Yeah, I'd just like to mention, you know, there's a lot of really positive stuff going on. I, and I, I just get overwhelmed. Um, you know, I, my, I, I tell you what, when I start thinking about what's going on on the pier with this, uh, the, the, the chart, free charter for the handicap people, I, I actually get a little teary-eyed, truthfully.
Beautiful website.
I, I talked to, um, uh, the sturgeon people today. They are trying to, to set up the sturgeon festival again. We're trying, we're getting back in business. They have a meeting here next week to talk about that, that I'm invited to. Um, this past weekend, full disclosure, I'm the president of the Elginak Rotary, but we did our, our fun, one of our fundraising, um, things this past weekend. It's the Beer, Wine and Seltzer, um, Tasting Fest in Elginak. We sold out. We had twelve hundred and fifty glasses. We, everyone was sold out. It was a sold-out event. Uh, eight, I would say eighty-five, ninety percent of the people were not from this area. And I talked to a lot of them, and nothing but positive things to say about our area. And it brings out upside money inside for, for, for it. Um, it, it, it was just a good event. We're doing another one in August, the Beer, this, uh, Bourbon Brews and Barbecue Festival. And, uh, I expect the same thing. Um, but, uh, congratulations to Officer Don. And, uh, just a lot of really, really cool stuff going on. I'm very excited going forward, so.
Hopefully.
Motion to adjourn. Motion, let's get out of here. Let's get the air fixed. Support, all in favor, ayes. Thank you, and, uh.
Hopefully the big give is real.
Oh, yeah.